About time for us to get ready to start the city council meeting for this evening. I appreciate your all's attendance this evening and would greatly appreciate it if you'd stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Immediately after the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll have Pastor Andy Fraser from the United Methodist Church lead us in invocation if you can remain standing for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me? Dear God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as a community. God, we thank you in this spirit of thanksgiving for all that you've blessed us with, for a good community to live in, for the processes here to figure out how to run this community well, and for the good people involved in those processes. God, for all those things and so many more, we give you thanks. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Rolling right along. Excuse me just a minute. All right, we'll work our way to agenda item number one, which are citizens' concerns about items not on today's agenda. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to stand and speak to the city council certainly about items not on tonight's agenda? This is an opportunity to address the mayor and city council on the record in an open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary and with the consensus of the city council placed on our future agenda. If you'd like to take the podium, stand and state your name and address, I'd appreciate it, please. Thank you.
Shawn Barlow, 13810 Wood End Road. I'd just like to speak to some safety issues on Wood End Road to the west of town here. I'd really like to see some speed humps put in on our blind hilltops. I think everybody, council and the mayor, have been out and have seen those and realized what a danger they are. The thing right now that makes them at least tolerable is that we have very little traffic. I sit out on the porch and I just am amazed at how few cars come up and down. And the cars that are coming know the road and they know that there's blind driveways and probably everybody's been confronted with a braking situation where somebody's coming on the road and somebody's coming out of a driveway and everybody's rattled because they're hitting the brakes and trying to maintain safety that way. But with the elevated amount of traffic that's coming, we need something in place that's going to be 24/7. Appreciate the police and all they do, but they can't set up somebody on the street 24/7. If we got a couple and possibly three, because there's one hill that I'm not quite sure about, I haven't studied it enough, but definitely two, like 15 mile an hour humps. The paving company that put the new surface in would probably work a good deal. I don't think it'd take a ton of asphalt or a ton of time. And give me the paint and the design and I'll stripe it, you know? I mean, I'm willing to do what I can. The thing about the new traffic that's coming in is that these people are going to drive this road probably just the one time and they're not going to know about the particulars in it. It looks like the culvert down there's got some stakes out and they're going to do something there, you know? So that's being addressed. So I think if we got the humps in there, signage to designate those, and we need a couple more speed limit signs. Right now, from Santa Fe to 142nd, I think there's two in there. So at least two more, maybe four more, which I can't imagine that that's a great expense. The blind curve down there, which is less blind now, Amber put in a work request, talked to Rick on the phone about it last Tuesday, I believe. He got a crew out there and they went through and it looks like they put in a full day on it. And now it's open to what I call a winter sightline with nothing growing.
Winter, okay, I'm sorry.
They've got out enough that you can kind of see through the trees that are there. And when we talked, it was kind of like, you know, this doesn't have to happen, you know? It can happen with employees when you've got a couple hours here or there or whatever. And so I think he wanted to get in there and open it up so it was safe right away, which he did. And I think he's going to get back in there as he can and take stuff out because if the fence comes out, then the mowers can just go through there and it's a quick maintenance. But it's going to take some more tree limb removal and a bio coat to dig out the stumps in the fence and that kind of stuff. So, I mean, I can research the cost of this or...
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. These issues are ones that have been addressed with the city manager. He's mentioned that they're going to start looking at those specific things a little bit closer, some signage, some limited sight ahead or the... I'm not a well-versed expert on the different things that are available, but... And with talking with the police department, see how best to manage those areas with those concerns. So I know the site triangle's starting to be addressed and they're looking at getting some other signage, the culvert and things like that. So I appreciate that.
And if I can just add to that real quick. The concern, I brought up the speed bump thing a couple of years ago to somebody down at City Works and they said, "Well, because of the snowplows." But these speed humps are so gradual and they're pushing snow over them many places around the metro.
Another thing are those little rub spots where the vibration spots, rumble strips, whatever, that are another way to increase attention in those areas. So they're looking at those things and considering those and how best to treat that improved country road.
Yeah, well, yeah. And another thing to add and the reason why I really want to get this thing in, when these trucks start rolling and there's going to be hundreds of them, these trucks are 54,000 pounds and up, depending on how many axles they're carrying. And you get broadsided by a car, that's one thing. You get broadsided by one of those big trucks, even in my big truck, that's a no-win. So really, if we can get this thing done before these trucks start rolling. And they're coming in from that direction, the gravel's out there, the concrete, it's all to the east, the lumber. Maybe the guy doing the flat work would come in from the west. I think we probably know who that is. And that's about it. Everything else is going to roll down that road past our driveways.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else that'd like to address, please stand and state your name? Mr. Wagner.
Brian Wagner, live at 512 Shidley. My concern is at Third Street in Cedar. During the activities, this also helps for the community center, the haunted house, Victory Assembly Church. It's 20 miles an hour there. This is mainly at nighttime during the crosswalks. We need some lighting for crosswalks. Numerous times at our church, I'm part of Victory Assembly, numerous times we've had really close calls of somebody getting hit by a car. I'm looking at... I used to work for the city, Public Works. I'm looking, waiting for this company to email me back. They got these signs, crosswalk signs, they light up, they're with solar lights. And anyway, I'm waiting for them to get back with me and I will bring it to the next council meeting and see what we can do. And I brought it with our church and see what we can help out with the cost of the crosswalk signs. And this will benefit the community center and during activities of even during court, numerous things going on at the community center. Also, Sunday night service at our church, Wednesday night, numerous things going on up at that area.
I appreciate that, Brian. You can give that information to Shawn's office or Amber there at City Hall. They'll appreciate that. I think from what I'm hearing, most of the times that you have concerns with are times not necessarily during the business day. Municipal court, the community center is often busiest on weekends and in the evenings and church on Sundays. So this may have been something that we haven't really, don't have a real good handle on, the pedestrian traffic up there at high, at peak hours of pedestrian traffic as opposed to the peak hours of the vehicular traffic, which would be morning rush and evening rush hour. Because I know those areas are very busy at that time. So we'll certainly all, certainly pass this along. Appreciate your concerns and we'll get into it and get back to you. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to stand and please step to the podium?
Hello, my name is Pamela Poe. I'm at 15544 Bradford Court. I'm here today because I'm one of 10 group of women that meet two times a month that are all small business owners downtown Bonner Springs. We have worked in the last year to really try to bring not only our community, but people outside of our community to shop and kind of discover what Bonner's about and who we are. Together, our 10 stores alone have over 25,000 Facebook followers that we do advertise to. We found out recently that an organization falsely represented the desire of our downtown to the city council and got a permit to close down the downtown Oak Street locations for Small Business Saturday. We had a vote, which we didn't realize they had already gone to the city in October to get that permit. We didn't realize that then, that we had a vote for that in which the president of that organization was at and we had 10 stores voting. Six voted no, two voted, or six voted no, two voted yes, and two abstained from voting. We did not feel like on Small Business Saturday, which is to represent mom and pop brick and mortar stores, was the time to have an event down the sidewalks bringing outside vendors to sell their wares. We are very supportive of when the community puts on events, tiplo days, all that. We were just very upset that they did that on that day. I guess we kind of felt like that should have been about what we are about. And, you know, we've recently started doing stuff with the community, we started doing stuff with the schools, we are really trying to promote that. And I guess I am here to figure out and find out how do we, as a downtown, obtain that permit so that doesn't happen again?
Sure, yeah, that's a good... And Amber, our city clerk, can give you all of the information concerning requests like that. The group that requested that did the same thing and they requested to use the city streets. And we are trying supportive of all the different groups in Bonner and that's why we allowed that or voted to allow that to happen here at the city council. So we're very supportive and appreciate all that the small businesses in Bonner done as well as all the home occupations, I guess. That was, seems as though there was a communication problem between the different groups and that, you know, helping, I don't know what I or the city council can do to help remedy that communication problem, but I know the city is very supportive of the downtown business group by having involvement with that and hope that that can continue. And if you have a desire to be involved with the activity on our Bonner Oak Street, I think that's wonderful and I would refer you and your liaison to contact Amber, the city liaison, which is Betsy. And I think she could help you with a lot of that. And hopefully the last Small Business Saturday was a success for everyone. And I know that there were a lot of concerns. I don't know how much of those came to fruition, but hopefully everybody was, had a good event.
Okay. And how far out, is that something that she could direct me to, I guess?
Yeah, you need to do that ahead of time.
Is there like, if we can do it for five years, let's get it for five years? If we could do it for...
Yeah, I don't know that there's any usurpery type of ability to do that. I think we're within the year is what we schedule for. And hopefully, you know, they may want to have, I would, I would hopefully suggest there'd be some type of harmonious agreement between the two groups that could, everyone could benefit from. And by maybe utilizing half the street or just the sidewalks or parking lots to some of the private parking lots around. But I think from my experiences in other communities that I've visited, it seems like the bigger the event, the more involvement, the more people, the more traffic you get. And so hopefully I would encourage everyone to work cooperatively. And I think the communication in both those two groups will help with that or at least have the potential.
Sure.
I don't know if that's an option or not, but thank you very much and I appreciate that. Anyone else that would like to stand and speak to the city council about an item not on tonight's agenda? All right, no, seeing no others, we'll move on with our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the November 13th meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, and appointments to boards and commissions. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written or stated.
Very good. Anything to be pulled from the city, from the audience? Questions or clarifications from the council? Seeing none, vote please.
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
On to agenda item number six, a resolution to approve the issuance and delivery of general obligation temporary note series 2017-1. And we'll ask for a staff or professional assistance. Presentation.
Kelly LePlante, the manager of character. David Arterberry, our financial advisor with George K. Baum. I think he's going to talk about the resolution and our two bond counsel, Tyler Ellsworth and Aiden Zareen, but David Rock are also here if you have any questions. They've prepared the resolution.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening, David Arterberry, again with George K. Baum and company. It's a pleasure to be here. Tonight, you have in front of you the final action that the council will need to take related to the issuance of $770,000 of temporary notes to fund, to provide initial funding, construction period funding for the Riverview project. The notes are being sold, they're scheduled to mature in one year, but actually the plan is that sometime probably in the early to mid part of next year, once the project's been completed, that the city would actually retire those notes with a permanent bond issue that would also maybe provide some of the initial funding or part of the funding for the police and city hall projects, to the extent that you know what the plans are by then. For this project, we sent out a request for proposal in the early part of November to a lot of area banks, asking them to submit a bid for the purchase of the notes. And we would award it to whoever offered the lowest interest rate to the city. And as you'll see it from that sheet in front of you, we ended up getting five bids returned to us and that is a great response. We've gone through this process with a number of other cities in recent months and five is the most bids that we've received in quite a while. So it was a great response and I'm pleased to report that the best bid was submitted by our vest bank at an interest rate of 1.02 percent, quite a bit better than the other rates. And to be real honest with you, the second and third place bids at 1.35 and 1.95 percent, I thought were very good rates until I saw that bid by our vest. So a great response. We looked at the bid, everything's correct. We've talked to the bank, they understand how the notes are going to be issued and when they're delivered and all of that. So we see no reason that you wouldn't want to proceed with working with our vest bank. The action item that you do have in front of you is just simply the adoption of a note resolution that will lock in the interest rate on the notes as well as lock in the sale of the notes to our vest bank. It also contains all of the terms and conditions about the maturity date, when you could redeem the notes early, the mechanisms, the way you have to go through to pay them. So it's really, like I mentioned before, it's the final step in order to issue the temporary notes, final step for the council to take.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anything else to add? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the resolution to approve the issuance and delivery of general obligation temporary note series 2017-1 in the total principal amount of $770,000.
Moved in seconded. Questions, concerns, and comments from the commission, starting down here, sir?
None.
None.
Goodness, seeing none, I'd ask for a vote please.
1 percent.
Shannon?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Very good. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I'm very, also appreciative that the local banks are making a commitment and doing their best. So I don't know if any of us who happen to go into those establishments might recognize them and thank them for their participation, though when we do it by bid, it's pretty easy to make that decision. Rolling along to agenda item number seven, our city manager's report. Shawn?
Before I forget, your size, your weekend's activities, your...
Oh.
...like those and the floor. Right? Also wanted to make mention, this is in the city manager report that the city has been working on to go online, more robust city website. Part of that effort is also our last little step, which is the deployment of a online app that you can download on your phone. I don't know if it'll cover by the end of the year. What it allows you to do is essentially engage like you would on the website, but a little bit more. Case in point would be you have a request tracker that you can submit a concern that you might have, case would be a pothole. This allows you to actually take a picture using your phone, using this application and then send that back to us so we get a picture of the issue along with your description and everything else that you've been doing. So it's a little bit easier for folks to engage with the city government beyond just the website. I also wanted to make mention, I've included in my report the city strategic plan. With that, I've gone through just for everybody's reminder, just what that process looks like. There were several different phases, engagement effort, internally with the organization, with you all as the left body as well as the community. Ultimately, we put together a plan. One thing that I'm noting today, I wanted to make everybody aware of, is exactly where we're at on this plan. So if you open up the document, you'll see all the different categories that we have. So again, the goals are essentially to try to be a higher level of engagement overall under the idea of work and visit. But with that, first, we'll schedule the right-hand side, exactly where we're at. A lot of them have been completed or in progress. Some I also know is just operational, what I do about that. Those are a little more ongoing in nature and there is no conclusion to them, it's just, it's going to happen forever. And then ultimately, like areas that are showing just where they're at in terms of what to continue over time. So again, this is just, I think, a progress report for you all as well as the community because I understand how we're actually making these engagement efforts for the community. And ultimately, this is something that we'll continue to use year after year to set the goals and objectives for our city. There's a lot of things that you see that are probably white right now, probably going to turn orange by the end of next year. Hopefully, it's either orange or going to be green, which we're not completely completed. So I just wanted to, again, give you all an update on exactly where that effort is at. Probably going to... With that, that concludes my report.
Very good. Well, thank you so much. We'll move right on into city council items and we'll start down here with Councilman Shannon, sir.
The community worship service was very good. And it's amazing what our local organizations are doing to help people that are in need in Bonner Springs. It's really pretty amazing. And from people that were living in the Kmart parking lot to now has jobs and things like that. So Von Trent and the Feed His Lambs, phenomenal organizations. And if you're looking for someplace to give and help people, it's, those are, those are great. And the local churches are really supporting that.
Thank you.
Good meeting.
Nothing for me?
Nothing for me.
I'll just ask you a question. Isn't that a Rubber Club Ag Hall thing, just the 30th?
I'm sorry, what? The what club?
Chamber.
Oh, Rotary Club at Chamber.
At the Ag Hall?
Uh-huh.
Okay, that's all. I didn't see that and that's something pretty cool.
It was in email blasts that went out to everyone today, I think, or yesterday. Or I went through it anyway. Okay, yep. Yeah. And you should, I thought they mailed out invitations as well, so.
Okay. Well, it's something, good thing.
Yeah, Rotary's, yes.
That's all I got.
I was just going to ask, when it comes to the temporary notes, do we have a status update on the Riverview project? I have curiosity.
Ongoing.
So it's in orange?
It's in progress. Right red orange. As of right now, there was a little bit of slight delay a few weeks ago as they were trying to tow the facility or some of the people over there. So we're a little bit behind with that. At this point, our end date is still about 60 months after the start of the year.
60 days.
It's been 60 months.
It's been 60 months. Now we're working on 60 days.
But no, it should still be done in about 60 days from the top of November, so like in January before that's over.
Great.
That's it.
Anything else? Very good. The other thing I was going to make mention, it sounds like there's some things that have already started to happen on Wood End. Do you have the...
We went out, as we alluded to, right now, we're actually doing this as a public work screw anyway, our street screw is going out and we're doing some of the vegetation as they're also out on Front Street as well, cleaning up that area. So we were out on Wood End and cleaned up that. I personally drove out there after our last council meeting and took a look at it on Tuesday, looked at some of the concerns with the culverts and then with Rick and then Matt Pease as well, about what he's doing to that. So we're looking at replacing some of the signage. I did just get an update from our chief of police earlier today about what needs to go in or some considerations for signage out on that area. Obviously, part of the issue with the cresting of those hills is, well, is that the time you can ride a smooth driving surface or steep hill, there's lights and issues. So we're actively looking at what we can do to improve that, this road, which also looks at a lot of other roads that we have. There are similar type of nature. So it's an ongoing process.
Thank you very much. It's been a while since we reviewed or re-concerned ourselves with different aspects of the signage and things of that nature, speed in Bonner Springs. So I appreciate that and the new input or the input from the new police chief and their professional concerns or evaluation will help a lot with that. So I appreciate that and we'll continue to watch that. As far as moving on to the mayor's report, I've, as all of you, I'm sure, had a very nice Thanksgiving, as did myself and my family. I had the opportunity, great fortune, to go to Colorado by car, driving all the way. And the state of Kansas, status of... of the highways is far superior to the other states that I drove through. We went to Denver, or just south of Denver, and there's a noticeable difference. And I'm very thankful for the I-70 and the condition that it's in across the whole state. Also, with the enforcement, increased enforcement that the entire state has utilized this last holiday weekend yielded some results from myself as well. So I, it's been suggested that I slow down. So those, those are, those things are going to happen. Those enforcement, increased enforcement opportunities do, do lend to results, so.
At least in Bonner.
Well, it wasn't in Bonner. No, it wasn't in Bonner. It was in Kansas, but not in Bonner.
Okay, at least you kept the money in Kansas.
Yes, there you go. That was the silver lining, I guess.
Looking for that stuff, man, coming from Colorado.
No, it was on the way there. Not that there was any of that on the way back, it's just, come on now.
Careful, careful.
But...
Now, did you notice my marker, 419.9?
No, I didn't. Yeah.
Well, that's why they got 4, yeah, 419.9, because they keep taking 420.
420 kept on getting.
That's funny.
I took a picture last Sunday.
But the thing that struck me more than anything is how fortunate we are in, in our, in Bonner Springs. We have a wealth of concerned, involved citizens, and both with the ongoing organizations that help out those that are less unfortunate, less fortunate than others. And it's really, it's great to be a part of this community. Unfortunately, a big portion of the rest of the country, but certainly Kansas and, and Colorado in between here and there, certainly appears to be much less fortunate than we are. Some of the small towns across Kansas have, have just suffered greatly because of the economic concerns, and we're very fortunate for what we have, or I am very fortunate for what we have. To that end, I had the opportunity to join Sean this morning on a tour of the cereal mill, the old mill down behind the feed store. It has been purchased by a group of highly motivated young men, up and coming entrepreneurs who are well underway of cleaning up that facility. That facility, it certainly appeared as though it was going to fall into the ground. It had been neglected for far too long, and the previous owners didn't have the wherewithal, nor did anyone else to remedy that. The, this new group of owners have come in and, from all appearances, are going to salvage a good portion of the, the building. They have removed a lot of the old equipment off of the sides and top of the building. They're putting on a new roof to seal it up, and they're going to make it, close off the windows and put windows back in, all the broken out windows, I guess is how I should say it, and make it a usable space. Their primary, primarily, they're going to utilize the warehouse facility, which is the lower portion, closer to the feed store, as a storage area for cars and automobiles. So that's the primary thing that's going to happen, and they're doing some asphalt yet this, this week, to be able to, to move into that area. And they've just cleaned it up so well so far, because all of us know how bad it was. But they are even, have plans to clean it up a lot more, do some, putting grass up, back up to the building and reclaiming that area down there. They've made some improvements that are, improved the safety of the whole neighborhood. They've covered up some cisterns and some oils that were open, and they were as shocked as everyone was. So they're, they're, they have a lot of ideas, one of which is to turn the old mill portion of the building into perhaps a brewery and maybe a coffee shop or something at some point in time. It has that perfect retro warehouse industrial look, both inside and out, and I'd imagine if anybody can get it done, it's these go-getters. So I, I know the whole community is interested in it because it's such a visible part of our town, and so hopefully, everyone will be able to convey. There's a, a good group of young men who are motivated to be a part of our community and have taken an interest in a ISOR and are rehabilitating it, and hopefully, they'll be even more potential down the road. So I welcome them to the community and, and hope everything goes real well for them. Other than that, unless anyone has any questions for me, I invite everyone to the Chris Candy King Christmas and Mayor's Christmas Tree Lighting, that's a mouthful, I'm doing from memory, on Saturday evening. The parade will start up at the First Christian Church parking lot at about 5:30. And prior to that, you can pre-locate your floats or walking groups or whatever up there. It will also be an opportunity to gather canned food items for the Von Trent Christmas baskets. You're encouraged to bring those. They'll have places to donate those at the Centennial Park where the parade culminates. It's a big, long parade. And we'll have the mayor's youth council will help assist in lighting the, the biggest mayor's Christmas tree in Bonner Springs history. Yeah.
It grew another foot last year.
Yes, it's, it's up there. Someone asked me, is, is it taller than you? I said, yes, but I can still reach all the way to the top of it. But you can't see through it, so I'm very, very proud of it. It's better than ever. I'm excited about that, and hope everyone who has an opportunity to would be able to join us. Other than that, if there's anyone who has a question, yes?
I just wanted to say something to Tilly. I want to, on behalf of our town, Von Trent, thank you Sacred Heart of Jesus Catholic Church for all they did this year. They just gave another big bunch of, what was it, 16,000, they gave a great bunch. So I know you're involved in both those, so thank you.
Yes, thank everyone. Other than that, word earned.